This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
And it's six o'clock. So we're going to start off, your attention please. Thank you. Tonight's meeting is of the City Council's Rules and Regulations Committee. It is being held here and remotely by authorization of the governor, and that authorization runs through 2025. Tonight, we're going to continue our discussions. And I would like to be able to see that anyone who hasn't spoken has the opportunity to speak. If you have spoken and you have something else to say, something you'd like to add to the conversation, that's fine. How many people expect to be speaking tonight? Thank you. I think we can give up two, three minutes. I'd ask you not to repeat yourselves during your discussion. We're going to try to get to conclusion. Our hope is that we can present something to the City Council next week, and we can move this along. Do we have any questions from the councilors? We have Councilor Terrell, Councilor Gomez, and myself, JP Krosinski. That being said, public speak.
Before that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I want to make a motion to suspend the rule to allow, to suspend the rule of the agenda. That way, we can allow public participation because it's not on the agenda. I will make that as a motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to suspend the rule because public speak was not officially on the agenda. That is in good order. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then I guess we now have official permission to proceed. If you would identify yourself when you come to the podium, state your name and address. That is the usual course.
Thank you. Kay Collins, she/her pronouns, Carroll Ave., East Hampton. Good evening, councilors. We are aware that there has been an ask to adopt some language in this resolution. You have before you the result of a wealth of lived experience, self-education, teaching, and learning. So much of it willing to be shared. We spoke when we brought this to you about education being a part of our mission. In this coalition, we have Janie, who is a music educator, who has told us about teaching music that was so intertwined between the Jewish and Palestinian traditions as to be virtually indistinguishable. We have our poet laureate Carolyn, who tells us about the rich poetic tradition of the region. We've talked about films that we would like to share with the community of East Hampton. The sharing won't end with a resolution. I wish that all of you could have been in the rooms where this document was crafted and seen the respect and passion with which these words were written. You would no longer wish to change them from what they are. You too would respect the heart with which they were crafted and their intention. It was truly a table set with love. These are people who honor the art of compromise and who also honor that we few speak as the voice of the many. Tonight, we will leave the decision to pass this forward in your hands.
Excuse me, just a process question.
Just one second.
It's muted.
I know, that's. Just one second.
I'm glad you're here tonight. Running this. I think it's a question of technical difficulty, so bear with us. Why don't we give it a moment?
Yes. Okay, it's back. Now there, then we get.
Now we're good. Next person, please.
Sorry for the inconvenience.
Good evening, everybody. Mary Amanda Sarah, 359 Main Street, East Hampton. So Kay has just spoken about the diversity of our group, and I know other people have spoken at the other meetings about it. And it is truly impressive. I have been involved in community government in two different cities and community participation in two different cities. And I must say that the coming together of this group has been one of the most, one of the fastest and most powerful comings-together that I have seen. When we stand out on the corner, which we did just now with our banners, ceasefire, East Hampton says ceasefire, we get a constant stream of honks. And what I will tell you is that we started calling people to come work with us on February 19th. And between then and now, we have a list of 351 people. Some of them are active, some of them simply follow us. But in all this time, only two people have asked to be dropped from the list, only two. On March 10th, we started our, we were doing outreach in various ways. On March 10th, we started in the form of a petition. In that time to now, we've gotten, which is included in our main list, but is organized by precinct and role in the city. Another, what is it? I think it's around 178. So the combined list is about, close to 300 people. What's interesting is that what we're also finding from people in, there are business owners. There are people who own property here. There are people who work here. There are people who attend services here. And I will say that the strength and imagination of this group has just surprised me in my, well, I'm 80, but I've only been active for maybe 60 of those. And I will say that I have not participated in anything like this. People who are so committed to their city and their community and to each other. And I think that that's reflected in our resolution. It was recognized by the Western Mass ACLU leader, Bill Newman, on his radio show yesterday, who also called it the best-crafted resolution in the valley. And I just want to say that I hope that you hear us and that you understand that we're here for the resolution and for the long haul to stand behind our city councilors and do the work in the city that has to be done, starting with a community-wide dialogue on this event that has shaken us to the core.
Hello, my name is Sarah Weinberger, and I live at 359 Main Street in East Hampton. I want to second what our last two speakers said about the experience of being in this planning group. I was really active when I lived in North Hampton for many, many years in social justice work and city government a little bit too. And I've been here almost 10 years, and this is really my first foray, and it's been an amazing, amazing experience. Yesterday, Mona Shadi, a member of our group, who is Muslim and from Egypt, and I, who am Jewish and an adult child of Holocaust survivors, appeared together on Bill Newman's radio show to talk about our group's ceasefire resolution. And not only did he say that we had the best resolution in the valley, but then he called me back later and said, "I just want to tell you, I've read a lot of resolutions, and this is the best one I've read in terms of balance." And I think that's what our group is about, is balance. We have a good enough ceasefire resolution that's supported by many residents of East Hampton. It calls out the Israeli government, it calls out Hamas, doesn't dehumanize Israelis or Palestinians, and centers a bilateral ceasefire as our main ask in order to end the death and destruction. But no matter how good our diverse, our diverse planning group believes it is, no resolution will please 100% of the people who read it. The reality, however, is that Senators Warren and Markey, Congressman Neal, and President Biden will not focus on our language. They will likely pay attention to the numbers of Massachusetts cities and towns and cities and towns all over the country who are calling for a ceasefire. We know by the United States' recent abstention, the UN resolution for a ceasefire, which they've never done before with Israel, and that unconditional release of hostages. It demonstrated that the pressure is beginning to work. Instead of a veto, we got an abstention. We need to add East Hampton's voice to the numbers of communities across the nation demanding an end to the deaths of Palestinian children and families and the loved ones of hostages and the hostages, the hostages who still remain in Gaza. I implore the members of the Rules Committee to let this resolution be free to proceed to the full City Council for a vote so that our beloved city of East Hampton can be counted among those communities who took a stand and raised their voices rather than remaining safely ensconced in a shell of silence. Thank you.
So it's perfect. Good evening. Mordachai Kamel, 359 Main Street. It looks like we've taken over the meeting. Since I spoke last at this podium a week ago, more than 500 women and children have died in Gaza. Those bombs that were dropped were American-made, American-paid for with our tax dollars, and in violation of American law because the Leahy Amendment to the Defense Authorization Bill states that you cannot continue to supply weapons to people who are committing human rights violations. And there are very few human rights violations that are worse than killing civilians. I urge you not to let another 500 people die before we pass this resolution. I know that we don't do much with these things, but we make our voices plain, and we will not be bystanders. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Ruth Jensen, 28, East Maple Street, East Hampton. 20-year-ish member of the East Hampton community, rank-and-file member of Massachusetts Teachers Association, and an executive board member of the Western Mass Area Labor Federation. I'll keep it short. I respectfully ask for the Rules Committee to respect the democratic process and bring the resolution for an immediate and permanent ceasefire to a full vote. The resolution should be considered unamended, respecting the collective diversity of East Hampton residents who authored it and respecting the patient, considered, and deliberate process we have followed to bring it before the council. Such an engaged collaborative community should be precisely what our elected representatives want most. To amend, alter, or quibble about language would reflect poorly on the representative structure of city government. East Hampton community members deserve to be represented, not chaperoned or managed. Thanks very much.
Hello, Jen Sandler, Williston Ave., East Hampton resident for 12 years. I'll be brief as well. I want to speak to the language of fear and the desire for watering down this resolution that we heard at the last meeting and urge you, as the folks who came before me, to not do that. It is really important, and there are a few moments in our, in our work and in your work as representatives of this city that you get to express moral courage. And expressing moral courage means that not everybody is going to agree. It means that you are putting yourself out there a little bit. And I think what we want to say is that we have each other's back and we have your back to do that. This is a really important, this is a really important moment. This is urgent, as you know. And it is not, it is not similar to every war that's going on everywhere. It is not, it is not a call for peace in general. It is important to indict people who are committing genocide. And right now, genocide is being committed in our names. All of us who are paying taxes in East Hampton are, this is our genocide. And if we can't stand up and say, "Not in our name," when something like that is happening, if we water that down, then we're letting ourselves down, we're letting our children down. We're not just letting the folks in Gaza down. We're letting ourselves down. It's really important to note when there's, when things are hard and to sit with that and to not back away and to say, "Yes, this deserves a vote." This deserves a vote in this, in East Hampton. This language has been worked over. It is a compromise. It is a compromise among a very diverse group of people who came together for weeks and talked about every word and every line. Mary made us go through every line. It wasn't like, "Is this good? Okay, great." It was every line. And respecting that process and not unilaterally, because someone feels uncomfortable changing it, is really important. It's really important, and if you're able to do that, it will, it will express a respect for a whole lot of people in this city. We would really appreciate that respect, and I thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Okay, I don't know one, sorry.
Hello, my name is Jean Francis, and I live on Cottage Street in East Hampton. And I'm here to really support what everybody has just said and also to say that I'd really like to see the Rules Committee go ahead and put this to the City Council. And I also want to say that I have been in East Hampton for about 20 years and worked on different things that we presented to the council. And never in the 20 years that I've lived here have I had so much respect and felt so proud of the residents that have put this resolution together. So I support that you go ahead and pass it and take it to the council. Thank you very much.
Hi, Danielle Obanyan, Precinct 3, she/her pronouns. So the only good thing that came out of the Rules Committee's delay in passing the East Hampton people's ceasefire resolution is that our community is incredibly galvanized. I'm a little heart-bedied and anxious, so forgive me. I now know people that I never would have met if not for doing this work. So if this resolution is not passed as we have worked so hard to write it, I'm greatly concerned that the city government's credibility will be impaired and there will be an entire community of activists who have now learned to work together for change. I want to take it back a bit to Thursday, August 12, 1982. During the Israel-Ebbonon war, President Ronald Reagan wrote the following in his personal diary, quote, "Met with the news the Israelis delivered the most devastating bomb and artillery attack on West Beirut lasting 14 hours. King Fod called begging me to do something. I told him I was calling Prime Minister Begin immediately, and I did, I was angry. I told him it had to stop, or our entire future relationship was endangered. I used the word Holocaust deliberately and said the symbol of his war was becoming a picture of a seven-month-old baby with its arms blown off. He told me he had ordered the bombing stopped. He claimed the PLO had started that and Israeli forces had taken casualties. End of call. 20 minutes later, he called to tell me he'd ordered an end to the barrage and pled for our continued friendship. Estimates of those killed during the 1982 war are nearly impossible to verify, but most sources cite 17,000 to 19,000 as the aggregate number of Lebanese, Palestinian, and Syrian civilians and armed fighters killed in that war, with many more wounded, a number far lower than the current numbers coming out of Gaza, which stand over 30,000 killed, most of them civilians, over 10,000 of those deaths being children. How can the US government demand an end to the bombing in 1982, but not now? So in our federal government stead, we must stand for an immediate and a permanent ceasefire by our city government and hope that it trickles up to these higher echelons of power. We demand the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages, an end to unconditional US military aid to the US government, and passing our community-written ceasefire as is. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Gamber. I am, I live on Brig Street in East Hampton. I'm a public school teacher, and I teach social studies to middle schoolers. I have two points that I want to make that are why I, as a teacher, am here. I teach my students every day that humans are responsible for most of the atrocities that happen in our world, but that humans are also responsible for most of the good and fixing those wrongs. There's an idea that, "Well, there's so many things wrong in our world, why are we focusing on this?" Even the biggest mountain, you have to start with a single step. That is not a good excuse to not take this step right now. The second quick thing that I want to mention is that part of my job as a public school teacher is to teach my students to have trust in their government and their government process. It's essential for me to be able to believe that when I teach my students. I want to be able to go to them and say, "Our public officials, they elevate the voices of the people, the people who vote, the people who live and work in their communities, the people who come together and compromise and work really diligently." I think about the song "If I Were a Bill." I don't know if anyone remembers that. Great song. It talks about the beginning of government action starting with the people. It does not say that government action comes from the government and then the people have to accept it. This is a dream that I know doesn't exist everywhere in our country, but I want it to exist here in East Hampton. Thank you so much, and I urge the committee to move this on to a full council vote.
Hello, my name is Ian Petty. I live at 7 Adams Street, Precinct 3. I just want to say that 100 towns and cities across the country have already passed ceasefire resolutions. Over 200 unions representing more than half of the organized labor movement have also passed ceasefire resolutions. What this means is that our ceasefire resolution here is not immaterial. We are joining part of a movement that has already exerted pressure on our federal government to make change and needs to continue to work until an immediate and permanent ceasefire is achieved. It also means that this resolution we have in front of you, its strength is in the fact that there are hundreds of members of the East Hampton community who have come together to craft it, to support it, and to advocate for it. And for that reason, I urge you to pass this on to the full City Council unamended because the strength of this resolution is not just in its language, but in the movement behind it and the movement that we join across the country. Thank you.
Mona Shadi, Ward 1. First off, a huge thank you to Sarah for appearing on the Bill Newman Show with me yesterday. I couldn't have done it without her, foremost. One of the most consistent questions about this council passing the resolution by Councilors Denham and Gomez is, that I've heard, is, "Well, what does our local government have to do with international issues anyway?" And this question denotes a very curious view for me as to what local and international means. The vehicles we came here with, the gas in their tanks, the food and clothes we required do not come from East Hampton, majority-wise. I grew up in Pittsfield, where GE poisoned its workers, families, the land and water system with PCBs for over half a century. Now PCBs can be found in the blood of polar bears. This genocide is local. There are actual folks here from this very town who are being acutely affected by what is happening in Gaza. Every single person who worked on this resolution, attended council meetings, signed the petition, stood out for a protest, and made public comment has been irrevocably, excuse me, affected and changed by the carnage being broadcast daily for nearly six months. Let me be clear. Not one among us got every single thing we wanted in this resolution. Yet we created a people's ceasefire that includes all of us. In a political climate where debates are screaming matches, civic conversation is deemed near extinct and compromise a lost art. We've done it. And we did it as a diverse population who led with their hearts, morals, and conscience, and who are all from East Hampton. This is the people's ceasefire resolution, and we ask you, who we've chosen to listen and lead us, to honor the democratic and civic bond we have and pass this resolution for a vote. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marie Boyer. I live on East Street in Ward 2. I am here to implore you to pass the ceasefire resolution drafted by the community and co-sponsored by Councilors Omar Gomez and Connie Denham without dilution, change, or amendment so that it may go to City Council to be voted on at the April 3 meeting. I was also here at the last Rules Committee meeting where the decision was made to not bring the resolution as written to City Council, and I would like to address a couple of statements made by City Council members at that meeting. In particular, Councilmember Owen Zarrett proposed an alternative ceasefire resolution, which, as Councilmember Denham pointed out, does not even mention Palestine or Palestinians. He focused on horrors occurring in Syria, Sudan, Nigeria, and Ukraine. And while I agree with him that those lives are just as important as those lost in Gaza and Israel, I am concerned and confused by his statement that, and this is a direct quote, "If we're going to resolve about one horror, that we make sure that we at least enumerate all the other things that are going on in the same breath." My issue with this argument is that the horrors that he mentioned are not being funded by US taxes to the tune of $3.8 billion, which is the amount that has been contributed to Israeli military operations annually. His effort to dramatically dilute the ceasefire resolution as written by the community that he represents is shameful. Also, at the Rules Committee meeting last week, City Councilmember Brad Riley contributed his opinion that it's, quote, "Not the business of a local government to weigh in on the actions of international governments." I wonder if Councilmember Riley is aware that of the $3.8 billion in tax dollars that funds Israeli military operations, over $150,000 was paid by East Hampton taxpayers last year. That makes it our business. I am an elementary educator, working mostly with children's ages 8 through 11, and that amount of taxpayer dollars represents a portion of my meager income. And I vehemently object to it being used to fund the tactical slaughter of children in Gaza. Thank you.
Next.
Hi, Carolyn Zikowski, Ward 1. For those whose response to our ceasefire resolution is, "What about Hamas? What about, what about?" I'd like to address that. Where is your concern that, under international law, Israel is the illegal occupying aggressor, like Russia in Ukraine or China in Tibet, whose flag we flew in town last week? The US has given more military aid to Israel than it has to any other country ever. The original Zionists freely used the term colonialism, spoke openly of being inspired by white European theories of manifest destiny. Where is your concern for that? Where is your concern for the fact that in the first two weeks after October 7th, Israel killed more Palestinians than all Israeli civilians killed ever by Palestine? Or that all experts call this a genocide? How about the fact that the IDF puts its own youth in prison if they won't perpetrate it? The antisemitism lies not in advocacy for Palestine, but in the conflation of Judaism with a violent state. Judaism is a 6,000-year-old diverse religion, not a state, based on beautiful metaphors for putting the broken world back together. Zionism is a few decades-old political idea, not a religion, that by definition necessitates displacement and destruction of a people. displacement and destruction of a people. If you've never wept about those things, then your whatabouts hold no moral weight. They are what Robert Lifton, the psychiatrist who studied the Nazi doctors, called thought-terminating cliches, whose sole purpose is to stifle dissent, and in this case, literally deny genocide. If I sound angry, I am. I feel like I'm losing my effing mind, honestly. Isn't this the moment my teachers taught me to look for, when we learned about the Holocaust? On my German exchange trip in high school, we went to Dachau and had to look at the ovens and sit and think about this. We learned about the Native American genocide and went to Plymouth Plantation, and the people giving us the tour were Native Americans from a tribe who no longer even had land. This is the moment we're supposed to stop worrying about careers or popularity, to stop being obscuritanist and flaccid with our words, Orwell is rolling in his grave if we can't say permanent ceasefire or genocide. To quote US serviceman Aaron Bushnell's last post before self-immolating at the Israeli Embassy, "Many of us like to ask ourselves, what would I do if I were alive during slavery, the Jim Crow South or apartheid? What would I do if my country was committing genocide?" The answer is, you're doing it right now. This is it right now. I'm actually going to just be quiet for a second so that can land. History and the future are very good note-takers, and they see you.
My name is Chelsea Council, and I live in East Hampton on Adams Street. Thank you for listening, to all of us. I also just wanted to address the audience that...
You just talk to us, please.
Sorry.
Just talk to us, not them, us.
Okay, I'll secretly do that, then. I was really touched and inspired by all the voices that raised up last time I was here. It was really, really cool to see like 30 or 40 people all come together and talk about how important the ceasefire was to save Palestinian lives. I don't know, like as like a young person who could be getting involved politically, that's really cool to have so many people be like, working together and agreeing all on the same thing. So in that vein, I want to agree with everyone who's spoken today. Please expedite the ceasefire resolution, please, and don't dilute it. And just kind of like, listen to the constituents, please. And also, like, I don't know, with these being stations that you're voted into, I guess just know that if you don't pass the ceasefire resolution, everyone in here will think that you condone the murder of men, women, and children, because there is an active genocide going on, caused and promoted by Israel against Palestine. It is akin to South African apartheid. It is akin to the Holocaust and the Third Reich. It's not exactly the same numbers, but it's like the mentality of those things. And we, right now, have the chance to speak up and stop that. And so, yes, I would like you to please move forth with that resolution, if you could. Thank you.
Hello there, my name is Asher Swank. I'm also an East Hampton resident, living on Adams Street. And I just wanted to emphasize the importance of passing this and agree with all of the past speakers. So today Gallup released a poll showing that 55% of Americans agree that Israel's approach right now is not good and should be changed. And as one of the speakers pointed out, we are seeing some movement from the Biden administration in terms of, you know, taking the weak-kneed position of abstaining from a vote that would give what they call a lasting ceasefire at the UN, not a permanent ceasefire. So as the speaker said, that is evidence that pressure is being applied and it's working. So my point for y'all is that this kind of resolution is incredibly important, because when you have 55%, you know, this is across the board, this isn't just a Democratic issue, this isn't just a Republican issue. You have that amount of people, a majority of people, who want something. It's imperative for us in our local communities to come together and, you know, be the voice for those people, whether it's the folks here today, or the, you know, the many on the petition, or just people more generally. People want this, and right now, our federal government isn't listening. So it's imperative for us here on the local level to let them know that this is what we want and to be in line with public opinion. Thank you.
I'm Mark Kenneth. I live at 135 Pleasant Street, East Hampton. I'm going to speak very quickly, so I can get all of this out. I lived and worked in the West Bank of Palestine from 2013 to 2021. To convey the full experience of my time living in a milieu of apartheid, occupation, ethnic cleansing, separation and annexation by ethnicity, settler colonialism, and blatant bigotry and exclusion, I'd be here until next year. I can only briefly offer the bare structure of the two major pillars of my experience there, which were, number one, that I never felt an ounce of unsafety, instead unquestionable acceptance when expressing my Jewish identity to Palestinians I lived amongst, and secondly, that I have been forever unnerved, infuriated, and devastated by witnessing the racist and lethal brutality that the Israeli state and their illegally occupying military have reserved for the Palestinians. I always reminded myself that nothing I witnessed there was actually happening to me, thereby I couldn't take it personally, even when I saw my beloved friends humiliated and degraded solely because of their nationality, solely because they're in the way of this violently steamrolling mono-religion-based state, which, as a reminder, was created in 1948 through terrorist militias that plowed through village to village, murdering and expelling as many Palestinians as they could, as was laid out in the military documents of Plan Deloitte. And here we are still today, a land shredded and carved out by illegal settlements and walls and roads delineated by race. I think perhaps the day that I started taking things personally there was when one of my students from Beth-- was when I saw from a bus window at a checkpoint, a soldier plant his entire face, his entire hand, over the face of one of my students from Bethlehem University, and shove him until he flew backwards and landed back first onto the pavement. That student's name was Ahmed, and every morning, he'd pop his head into my office and say, "I wish you a morning of flowers, professor." He was roughly translating from Arabic, Sabah al-Ward. He was harmless and sweet. Or was it the other illegal checkpoint where I watched elderly Palestinians forced to walk barefoot in the winter through puddles of water, all the while, the 18-year-old soldier screaming "Jehesh!" at them, "donkey," the most racist term you can call in Arab? How about the same checkpoint when the soldiers wanted to clear the waiting crowd, and they did so with stun grenades, tear gas, and rubber bullets? A young child casually pushing away the scarf I offered him through the cloud of poison gas? This child was already used to managing his survival through this madness. Was it another checkpoint? Was it the other checkpoint, and a young soldier who hoisted up her machine gun and pointed it right at us? I was with a group of Palestinian men and children, she pointed a machine gun right at us. Her eyes shocked and contrite when she registered me, the white foreigner. "Oh, sorry," she nervously laughed, lowering her gun. "Sorry, I thought you were Palestinian." The daily tapestry of oppression and resilience. I never was able to visit Gaza, the other cramped and compacted block of land reserved by Israel for deliberate concentration of an ethnicity, just as the West Bank is. But I do sensorially remember when my friend, a Jewish-American journalist, came to my apartment in Ramallah after visiting Gaza during the 2014 bombardment, when Israel slaughtered 2,500 civilians. And to note, this journalist expressed that he'd never felt more accepted as a Jew than during his multiple trips to Gaza. Dan and I hugged when I opened the door, and he stunk of saltwater. That's because the sea had infiltrated the dilapidated piping system in Gaza.
The time? Please wrap up and...
Okay. Imagine the smell of 2 million people minus, of course, the 31,000-plus already killed, covered in saltwater, dehydrated, somehow likely horrifyingly the least of their issues right now. Herbicide, homicide, genocide, a 75-years-long erasure of an indigenous culture.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Please pass this resolution. It's the bare minimum we can do. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Margot DeCostard. I live on Lincoln Street in East Hampton. And I spoke last week as well, gave some statistics about the level of famine that is happening in Gaza right now, and also quoted statements of genocidal intent from far-right Israeli leaders, so I will not quote those again. But I do want to say that, just listen to your constituency, so many of us want to pass this ceasefire resolution. So if you don't pass it, it's really just proving that you're not listening to the citizens here in East Hampton. Yeah, so that's really what I wanted to say. Please pass this ceasefire resolution. Just so you know, there's just, there's several politicians here in Massachusetts who have not called for a ceasefire. Richard Neal has not called for a ceasefire. Having towns in Western Mass supporting a ceasefire is really important to push those politicians to do better. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Miranda. I'm an East Hampton resident, and I live on East Green Street. I was also at the meeting last week and spoke, and just want to speak again to vote my voice, my support for the People's Ceasefire Resolution as written, and demand that that be immediately advanced by this committee and then brought to a full vote by the council. I haven't been a part of the process of drafting that, but I'm fully in support of this community mobilizing around this issue and using the city council space as one of the many terrains on which the national or international movement against this genocide, it's an important piece of it, as others have said, even though this is a local government space, it's an important part of the larger movement of expressing dissent with the use of our tax dollars to commit this genocide. And so I'm in support of this tactic, just like I'm in support of the students at Smith College right now, who are doing a sit-in as part of their campaign to push their administration to divest from the genocide. Last week when I spoke, I talked about how, at this level and at every level throughout the country, it's really a matter of making it politically inconvenient to not support the ceasefire. At the national level, I understand that this movement against this genocide is not a matter of changing the hearts and minds of the government or the President of the United States. The way that those political decisions are made is about what is too politically inconvenient to avoid or put off any longer. And so, just like at the national level, seeing dissent and disobedience in, from different towns, cities, parts of the workforce, is an important part of changing that political calculation at the highest level. Or, like the last person just mentioned, at the state level, in changing the political positions of our senators. Seeing which cities and towns support a ceasefire is an important part of that calculation. And at the most local level here, the organized residents of East Hampton are going to continue to make it very politically inconvenient for this council to ignore or postpone on this issue, because this is something that the community is very activated around and will continue to be activated around. And I personally care less about changing your hearts and minds, and more about making it clear that we will continue to mobilize and be a thorn in your side about the issue until you represent the voices of this community. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Hong Fan. I live at 28 East Maple Street, East Hampton, that's Ward Two. I'll be brief, because I'll be back next week, when, this is before a full city council vote, as I am sure all of us will be back for a full city council vote. Since this is the Rules Committee vote, I want to focus on just the democratic process, really, and highlight some things that went wrong in that first Rules Committee. The arguments of, in particular, Owen Zerrett and Brad Riley, that it's purely symbolic, what are we doing this for? In the same breath, they say, "We have a better resolution." That's actually highlighting how disingenuous their first point was. They actually are opposed to the People's Resolution, and they want to advance their own. Second, in terms of process and democracy, they said, "No, we don't want the resolution written by East Hampton residents, East Hampton taxpayers, who give and cultivate and give to the life of East Hampton. We want input from people who live in Long Meadow, Amherst, Northampton, organized talking points by them." That goes against the very principle of representative democracy. So not only is it a failure to do your job, not moving it past Rules Committee for a full city council vote, it's actively anti-democratic to stop the will of the people from being represented. The basic point, every year I celebrate East Hampton High School, winning "We the People." They understand the principle of representative democracy. The will of the people has been expressed many times. We took a long time, and the democratic process, this is democracy in action, has been long, 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 and arduous, sometimes really boring, meetings together, but we've come up with this. So please express the will of the people, do your job, move it for a full city council vote, and they can go on record, Owen Zerrett and Brad Riley, for supporting a genocide, opposing a ceasefire resolution, opposing the will of the people, opposing peace. They can go on record, put it before the full city council vote for the democratic process. This is the principle of democracy, this is the principle of representative democracy. And so I ask you, just to do your job, please move it forward. And I thank, again, the council members that are doing their job, representing the will of their constituents, and bringing this forward, and sponsoring this resolution. We are joining, we are part of a larger process of democracy in action across the globe, certainly across this country, and in terms of a direct, correct relation, many have enumerated. We are directly involved, because these are our tax dollars funding every bullet, every bomb that falls upon the children of Gaza. Thank you.
Anyone else? I see someone stand up.
Oh, someone's keys are here. Are they supposed to be here? It says Subaru on it.
Leave it there for now. I'm going to be fair again, I'm going to start the clock.
Thank you.
My name is Pam Fontesmay. I live in Precinct One on West Street. I spoke last week about how all of us have already been contacting our representatives in the federal government. We've made phone calls over and over and over. We have protested, we have written to them, we have written them emails, we have sent them postcards, there have been protests in Washington DC, there have been people visiting their offices. They don't listen to us as individuals, so our voices together are stronger, as I mentioned last week. In addition to that, at last week's Rules Committee meeting, I don't remember who, but one of the councilors had said that Elizabeth Warren and Senator Markey had already called for a ceasefire early on, and that is not true. And they have started to change their language, but on Saturday, they both voted to give more money to Israel and to defund the United Nations Relief and Works Agency, which is the agency that gives the most aid to people on the ground in Gaza, and the United States has historically been the largest funder of that organization. They can't do their job and save lives if we don't give them money, and our senators denied them that money. Thank you.
Next. Going once, twice, three times, we're on to the internet and the folks who joined us remotely. Do you see anyone?
Yes, we have.
I would open up, if you would raise your hand, either, well, through the bottom of the screen, there should be a spot to raise your hand, and then we will call on you. Can you see everybody?
Yes, I can see people.
Yes, I can see people. And I'm going to apologize if I mispronounce your name. Kayam, just one second, let me make you a co-host, that's the only way that people can unmute themselves.
All right, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I am Jamrog McQuaid, Precinct 5. Good evening, counselors. I'm speaking to you tonight with a very specific ask, and that is to move the community resolution for ceasefire as written to the full council for a vote. I will save most of my comments on the merits and the urgency for this resolution itself for that meeting. I will ask, though, that if anyone in the community hasn't read it, go read the UN Human Rights Council report of the Special Rapporteur published March 24th, three days ago, titled "The Anatomy of a Genocide," concluding in no uncertain terms, "There are reasonable grounds to believe that the threshold indicating the commission of genocide against Palestinians in Gaza has been met." As many people here tonight and last week have said beautifully, this resolution is a product of weeks of painstaking and thoughtful community collaboration, taking in a wide range of perspectives to end up with something hundreds of people can be proud of and sign their name to. We are not asking this committee to perfect the resolution, if that is even possible. There is no need to build more consensus. The consensus has been built, the community has been rallied, and all that is left to be done is your jobs. If you don't agree with the resolution's underlying premise, fine. If you don't think our city should change course from, or if you think our city should change course from previous resolutions and choose now to stay out of international affairs, that's also fine. You can vote no before the full council, but the community is asking you to vote on the resolution as written by this diverse group of community residents and subject matter experts. I'll also say this. The group of residents that have come together around this issue has been incredible. These people are inspiring, thoughtful, tirelessly compassionate for people they may never come to know. As someone who is active in the city, I have yet to see such a broad coalition of people across ages, religions, ethnicities, gender identities, and sexualities, working together to make our voices heard in the city. These are people who not only care about ending an ongoing genocide, but they want to see our city become a better place overall. In my view, it would be an immense lost opportunity not to welcome this passion and encourage those who are standing up to keep making their voices heard by passing this resolution to the full city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Just one second. Alice? Alice? Alice?
We can't hear you.
All right, let's go to Josh. Josh?
Yes, I'm here. Can I be heard?
Yes.
I'd just like to briefly echo the other sentiments about representation and democracy. If you're not paying attention and you're not sinking into the details of what's happening right now, it's only because you're not paying attention. And we have like a moral responsibility to look out for the other person. That's what democracy is supposed to be all about. That's what community is all about. That's what suffering is about, is the lack of looking out for the other person. And if you got into this business of representation in government to do just that, you have a golden opportunity right now to not only represent people, but also do so for the benefit and for the aid of people who are direly in need of our support and our consideration and our intention across the globe. Like, it starts here. We have to make waves locally first before broad sweeping change can be made, and we've seen that it's working. So just like the person said before me, please do your job. Please do your job.
Hello, this is Alice Levine. I am here.
Hi, Alice.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Can I be heard?
Very clearly, thank you.
Okay, so I mostly want to say that I'm here as a very strongly Jewish identified human rights activist. I have not been involved in the work that's been done so far, although I greatly respect it. I have been an active member of Be'ah Hava, whose rabbi you heard from in the past, and I'm also an active member of a small group called Jewish Activists for Immigration Justice of Western Mass. And the main point I want to add is that what makes me both saddest and most angry is feeling like any Jewish organizations, like the Jewish Federation, any Jewish leaders, whether on the council or from elsewhere in the community, feel that they can speak for the Jewish community as a whole. Jewish identity is at the core of my being. I am concerned about rising antisemitism, white nationalism, Islamophobia, and I cannot stand to sit by as more and more people are being killed in Gaza. So I really ask you to not see this as an issue of those demanding ceasefire versus those concerned about antisemitism. That is not really what's going on here. There are many, many Jewish members of the East Hampton community who feel that this is absolutely vital and must be passed. Please don't stand in the way.
Thank you. Quirk? Just one second, let me find her.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Deirdre Quirk. I live on Adams Street, and I just want to say thank you to everyone who has spoken so far, and thank you so much to everyone, including the counselors who has put in so much work on the East Hampton People's Resolution for a Ceasefire. I am an East Hampton resident. I was born here, I was raised here, and nothing has made me prouder of my hometown than the work that I have seen go into this resolution. And I just want to urge the council to pass this out for a full vote. Thank you so much.
Next.
Just one second.
Counselor Gomez, you're working hard this evening getting all this done.
Now you are a co-host, you can speak.
Great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, my name is Christian or Exion WZ Reader. I live at 26 Chapman Ave. I also have owned a business in East Hampton for a decade now, Comics &amp; More, on Cottage Street. And I also organize a free mass distro. I've put in a lot of work for community efforts and in radical care, and I'm going to keep this brief, I just, I wish you would do your jobs. The community is telling you what they want. Please step up. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else?
Going once, remotely, twice? No additional hands? Thank you. To those who've joined us remotely and those in the room. You've all spent much time and effort and are to be commended for participation in the process. At this point, public comment, public speak is closed for this meeting. At this point, it will be the counselors at the table who will discuss the matter. You're welcome to stay and listen. I would if I were you. I just wanted to leave a few comments before we begin. In all the years I've been here, I know there have been many resolutions, and I know we started with resolutions that were quite relevant, quite pertinent, and then others that eventually we got into because they were matters that were being voted on by the state legislature, or had to do with school funding, even though that wasn't quite our direct purview, we went to those resolutions. It's expanded and now... It's grown. I'm not sure what that says about local councils and what folks want from their local council, or... What? I'll leave that for another day. But when we get a resolution, I can't remember a resolution, please, folks, correct me if I'm mistaken. JT, you wouldn't probably know because JT's his first term started in January, so... A resolution that wasn't either brought by one of us or brought by the community and wasn't worked on, adjusted, changed? I don't know, can you remember any that wasn't, they were all crafted, built? Because the interests, although one may think we represent everybody, or you represent everybody, or you've included every group, as I heard one counselor say before, "I see about 100 people in the room tonight." Let's say there were 200, there's still 15,800 more that we represent as well as yourselves. So it's not unusual to have different inputs and different folks to have a change. That being said, we have our options tonight. Our options are to move along as written, our options are to change, or adjust, or talk about how we feel, or our view, the various words that are here, because they are words that will stay. And really, I think the point here is that they represent the body of East Hampton, not any particular group or interest or... And I did say this based on, imagine yourselves being totally opposed to this resolution, for whatever reason, not this resolution, but a resolution. You would expect your counselors to look at this with an eye toward, how can we make this something that really reflects the body of East Hampton? If it were regarding gun control, if it were regarding capital punishment, we could go on with the type of questions, but if you're on one side or the other side, it's our job as elected officials to look at all those sides. Wanted to lead us off with that. Counselor Gomez, or so we could adjust it, we can present an entirely new resolution on the subject. The subject being Gaza, Hamas, Israel. That's our purview. Therefore, I would open it up to my fellow counselors to talk about what's on their mind.
I'd like to defer to Counselor Gomez, who didn't have an opportunity to be here last time, so I'd like to give it to Florida.
That's kind of you, take you off.
Thank you.
And I agree, Counselor Gomez.
Thank you for the opportunity. First, thank you everybody for participating. This is amazing. This is what democracy is about. I want to apologize, I have another commitment last Monday, and that's why I couldn't make it. I'm not going to the details, but I apologize. But I watched the meeting, and I hear every single comment. Something that I think that was good in that meeting is including the people who was against the resolution, and particularly they don't mention why or what particular part of the resolution they didn't like it, but everybody was in favor of a ceasefire. Everybody. Everybody was in favor of having a ceasefire. Saying that, I think the possibility of some people in our community are against it because they need a little more explanation about what is in the resolution. And we can do that tonight, or we can do it Wednesday. Depends what the chairperson have as a questions. But I think it was clear that everybody agrees with a ceasefire resolution. I think that was the language where we're having some particular disagreement with some people of the community. I do agree with you, Mr. Sherman, that we represent over 16,000 people in our community. But definitely, this is a strong voice from the community, being organized, having multiple meetings, drafting a language to try to accommodate even my request. I know they spend hours. Probably they don't sleep well sometimes. I cannot imagine what it is about being in the middle of a war, because I can't, never be in one. I believe in peace. I believe this council should be doing something and say something when we see something that is wrong. It's as simple as that. I hear it's not our purview to make an opinion or a statement on something that is not related to East Hampton, but it is related to East Hampton. We have people, they have relatives, we have people, they used to live in both places, and because of that, I think it is our job to say something. I do believe 100% that this resolution cannot stop anything tomorrow, but definitely can push our federal delegation to take steps as soon more cities and towns are making resolutions as this one. I listened to the show yesterday, the show that one of the residents was talking about, and it was true. The host said that this is the best resolution that he ever saw about the ceasefire. And I'm not going to take any credit. I think the community deserves the credit for the language. I think we should send this resolution with a recommendation of passage to the full council. The latest version, again, you run the meeting, this is your meeting, but eventually I will want to make a motion, eventually, not yet, to instead of have the original one that Counselor Denham and I submitted over a month ago, replace it with almost some same language, but some updated notes to send you for the last version. I'm going to propose that later, so that way when we decide as a committee to send it to the full council... to send it to the full council, at the full council, we discuss the later, latest version. I hear the, from multiple people saying the, the situation there is complicated. And I'm not going to be the one saying that it's not, because it is complicated. What is not complicated is believing, uh, belief, that I believe in, in, in the peace world and that the region need, need peace. I hear in the past too, um, why we doing this one and no other conflicts around the The answer, the answer for this one is simple, because the community asked for it. If anyone else want to bring another resolution about any other conflict, I'm more than open to, to listen and work on it. But the topic that was for, uh, bring forward to Councilor Denham and I was about this one. So that's why we choose to, to work on this one. So being saying that, I just want to finish saying then, yeah, yes, it is our business. And, um, losing even one life is too many. Even one, that we know is more than one, but even one is too many. And if we can put just, just a little bit of hope in peoples, that our delegation in, in Washington are going to listen to us, or they're going to listen to us, not just East Hampton, right? East Hampton, North Hampton, Amherst. I think we're, we're doing our job. We're doing our job. And it's, and that's what we should be doing tonight, or that's what we should be doing on Wednesday. Thank you.
I will say that we did have several other proposals that I wonder if it makes sense to talk about or to read as alternatives. I think you're already committed to one perspective, and I'm not sure what your thinking is. I know there are many points in the res, existing resolution that I would make stronger rather than use the word horrified by the attack and... I think, I think this council should condemn the attack of Hamas. I think this council should condemn Israel for it, the way it has proceeded in the Gaza Strip. So I'm not comfortable unless we put ourselves, I mean, let, let's call it what it is. I think the civilian population needs absolutely immediate and safe access to the most basic of human needs. Water, food, medicine, medical care, shelter, none of which can possibly be delivered to all while this area is under the content, uh, conditions of intense conflict. So I think we have to call for a ceasefire. I wonder if it makes sense, since the UN resolution was just passed two days ago, and the UN resolution demands a ceasefire for, well, let me read it. The United Nations Security Council Resolution 2728, adopted March 25th, "to demand a Ramadan humanitarian ceasefire to be respected by all parties, a return of all hostages and detainees, and the immediate commencement of constructive talks leading to a lasting peace." I think the city could get behind each one of those issues. I'm not sure whether it makes sense to have more votes on a pass or fewer votes, or have it just squeak by or not squeak by. To me, I'd love to see it be a unanimous vote, but maybe that's too far to spread, to expect unanimity. Not that anything is going to make everybody happy. As this group now knows, you've been through it, you don't know, you know what the art of compromise is. It isn't exactly the way you would have it worded. I wonder if Israel would have invaded the Gaza Strip if there hadn't been the precursor attack. I don't know. I can't imagine that they would have amassed 300,000 troops and gone right in. But the attack was devastating. It's upset, the entire civilian population devastated, destroyed the Gaza Strip, and needs to be called out and condemned, regardless of whether it was a precursor or not. So I think we do need to raise our voices. I think we should move the resolution forward in its current form. My question is to the counselors here, should there be an additional form?
Additional what?
An additional resolution. It's broader.
I don't think it's needed. I think we have one that is really well-written, so.
I, I, I think folks have worked very hard and it is, covers, covers a lot of ground. And some people would say this is a wonderful resolution, a perfect resolution. Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. I don't, I don't really necessarily disagree with, with you, Mr. Sherman. But if that is, will be the case, we're going to end up with 20 pages of our resolution. Because we can keep adding every particular concern or more information that we should believe it will pertain to this particular issue. And I think if we keep doing that, I think we're going to getting out of the topic, because at the end of the day, what we are working on it is on, um, in a ceasefire. And, um, if, I mean, I, I recommend you and, and to read the resolutions loud for the public, for which one we're going to work. But again, if we're going to start working in a, in a piece of document, first we should choose, which one we're going to choose first. Right? That way we can have a point of start. But I think we have a really well document in front of us that does the one that we should be working. If you ask me particularly, I don't, will change anything, I will pass it as it is. I think, uh, seeing all the resolutions, the, the public didn't have the opportunity to at least listen to yet, um, I can see those, some of those concerns and the resolution that was bring forward from the community. If we saw one of the resolution talking about, um, Israel, basically was talking about the, um, the first, uh, Prime Minister of Israel, right? And this one, they're bringing forward from the community, it's clear that they are talking about the government. They are not talking about the people from Israel. They're talking about the government of Israel. So I think that would be covered with that one. And then again, it happens twice when, um, they're talking about the military of Israel. They are not talking about, again, the people who live in Israel, they're talking about the government. So I think we've been, um, well thought about the, the words that they put in this resolution, and I think cover all the, those concerns that I saw from all those resolutions. And for the, and for the public, we have another resolution that I don't know, because they don't have a name, we'll bring it forward.
I put that together.
I think it's important again for the public to, because it wasn't on the webpage, I think it's important for the public, if we're going to talk about this and, and all three counselors have, um, the resolution in front of us, I think it would be fair for the public at least to listen it. And then we will work. I think this, this one in particular is a totally different resolution. They don't even talk about ceasefire. I, I think it's a great resolution, but I think this is, should be introduced, um, as a new item in our next agenda. I'm more than happy to pass this one too, but this one is not talking about, about ceasefire, that's the topic that we should be talking tonight.
Agreed. Agreed. I will say there are a few points, but one, one in particular is I have some concerns about withholding unrestricted, withholding aid to, to, to Israel. And I'm not sure if I can vote for any resolution that contains that.
What was that? I'm sorry?
Withholding unconditional aid, USAID to Israel. That's at the end, the last, be it further resolved. This council urges the Biden administration, United States Congress, to call for the same actions and of immediate and permanent ceasefire. Between Israel and Hamas, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages and detainees on both sides, and an end to unconditional USAID to the Israeli government. That would, in my mind, I mean, the aid that is going to use for any reason to Israel. I'd, I'd, listen, I, I'm not... Again, please, no comments from, so. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Let's talk about that point. Unconditional, right? So whose money we're talking about?
We're talking...
We're talking about our money, right? If we're talking about money, when I give the money to my kids, and I don't want anyone to take it out of the contest, I just want to talk about the money. When I give the money to my kids, I give them some guidance, right? I said, take the money, when you go to the store, don't buy candies, because candy is going to be bad for you, right? But you're allowed to buy everything else, but not the bad stuff, right? So why are we not asking the same in Israel, right? If we're going to give the money to the Israel government, or the people, the government, and we are not allowed to request from our money, how they should be spending the money?
I hear you. So then you would say all aid should be conditional?
I don't think that's why they say there.
Well, the end of unconditional aid means that you either don't give aid or you make Like you said.
No, that's not what I said.
Well, you said...
I said, if we're going to give you some money...
Give you money, we're going to make conditions.
When we, when we approve the money for the police department, the police department have to use it for the line item that we approved in the budget, right? That's our conditions. They can use the money for something that are not there. But see, we're asking the same, like, we're going to give you the, we're not, we're not telling Israel, we're not going to give you any money. We're going to give you any money, but don't use it for this particular thing. That's, that's what it is. Because I believe that Israel should get money, and they should be protected, they should have everything that they need, right?
That, that brings up the point, I mean...
But at the same time, should be restrictions, like when United States send money to, to Puerto Rico for use it for something. We can, we can use it for something else. We have to use it for this particular, because earmarks of the money say we should be using it for this. And I think that's what the people in the community have been asking.
I, I, you know, let, let's look at it to, to another question. In terms of the, the Iron Dome, I would be appalled if our money was not spent.
The resolution doesn't say that.
I understand. I would be appalled if that were the case. And I don't want anyone to think that I would be against having us provide those types of funds.
But to think about, Mr. Sherman, to think about that should be in the resolution, it's not in the resolution. We're not talking about that.
In the resolution, it calls for an end to unconditional USAID, and I think that is subject to interpretation as to what is conditioned, what, what, what is conditioned and what isn't conditioned. And I'm certainly not thinking that each one of us in this room is an expert on how every dime goes to Israel and what we aren't experts in. I would leave that, I would leave that to those who are, who deal with this on a daily basis, the Department of State, et cetera, and not the citizens of East Hampton saying, this is how we should...
Can I ask?
Yes, please. I was just looking to Counselor Darrell in case he had a comment, then I...
Oh, I will. I'll have a comment.
Okay.
So you see the federal government spending the money the, the way that they want, because you, um, are telling they have the expert, not us? But I agree, they have a bunch of expert. But usually the federal, uh, government use money sometimes that we disagree.
Undoubtedly.
Right?
Undoubtedly.
And this is one of them. Not, I don't disagree that they spend money in Israel. It's how they spend the money in Israel. And that's why the wording is right there. And I think it's our job to, like, watch our money.
If, if, if those funds were tied to acts of genocide, if those funds were tied to, if we tied that language, I would, I would be comfortable with something like that. But to say that end to unconditional aid just doesn't, doesn't cut it. Counselor Darrell?
I'm going to be short and sweet. I'm going to be short and sweet in my comments. You can pass it off as me being new and being naive. As was stated during public speak, um, one citizen so eloquently put it, that everybody who worked on the proposed resolution didn't agree. Everybody had concessions. Nobody got everything they wanted. Nobody is going to get everything they want. They're not. And, and I believe it, it is our job to, to do the will of the people. That was, that was mentioned many times this evening in public speak. I'm of a mindset now where I, I, I feel comfortable, um, putting this before the, the full city council as amended here. That, that's where I stand on this.
As amended with the, uh...
Yes.
The newest version.
Then again, I think we should read it for the public.
I'd be happy to read it, if that is the will of, just to be sure we have it right. The East Hampton City Council Resolution pertaining to a ceasefire in Gaza, whereas all life is precious. The East Hampton City Council calls on all Massachusetts state and federal elected leaders, and residents alike, to protect life, stand united against violence, and advocate for the... and advocate for the safety, dignity, freedom, and collective humanity of all people, regardless of religion, race, ethnicity, or nationality. And whereas the council is horrified by Hamas's attack on civilians and Israeli military that resulted in nearly 1,200 deaths and around 250 people taken hostage on October 7, 2023. And whereas, since October 7, 2023, the Israeli government's offensive in Gaza, including heavy bombardment of and military incursions into hospitals, schools, residential buildings, religious sites, and cultural institutions, has killed over 32,490 people as of March 27, 2024, of which approximately two-thirds are women and children. And more than 74,889 have been wounded. And whereas, the city of East Hampton condemns the recent rise of anti-Semitic and Islamophobic attacks in our state, including Western Massachusetts and across the nation, and including by taking actions such as passing a resolution against antisemitism on November 15, 2023. And whereas, the International Court of Justice, of which the US is a member state, has ruled that Israel must take steps to prevent genocide in Gaza, including indiscriminate killing of Palestinians and deliberately inflicting on the group conditions of life calculated to bring about its physical destruction in whole or in part. And whereas the Gaza in its, in a dire, is in a dire humanitarian crisis with 1.8 million people, and 1.8 million being displaced, food, clean water, medicine, medical care severely lacking, and UN agencies and international organizations reporting that hunger, disease, and malnutrition are widespread. And whereas, the Israeli military is threatening a ground campaign in Rafa, where 1.5 million Palestinians, mostly displaced and living in tents, have nowhere safe left to flee. And whereas, US tax dollars fund Israeli military operations, including $3.8 billion annually in FY23. East Hampton taxpayers contributed $154,134 of that total, according to the National Priorities Project. And an additional $14.1 billion is being proposed at across East Hampton taxpayers of an estimated $571,919, according to the NPP. And whereas, 66% of the American voters support a ceasefire and want to see a US leverage its diplomatic relationships to further prevent, to prevent further violence and civilian deaths, according to October data for Progress poll. And now therefore be it resolved that the East Hampton City Council calls for an immediate and permanent ceasefire between Israel and Hamas, the provisions of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, and the release of all hostages and detainees on both sides, and an end to unconditional USAID in the Israeli government. Be it further resolved that this council urges the Biden administration and the United States Congress to call for the same actions of an immediate and permanent ceasefire between Israel and Hamas, the provision of lifesaving humanitarian aid in Gaza, the release of all hostages and detainees on both sides, and an end to unconditional USAID in the, to Israel, to the Israeli government, and as a first step to a negotiated and lasting peaceful future for all Israelis and Palestinians. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to Congressman Richard Neal, Senator Edward Markey, and Senator Elizabeth Warren urging them to take immediate action to use their position and influence to end the violence. That's the one we're going to pass along to the full council. At that point, the council is free, of course, I will remind everyone to amend, adjust, change, substitute, or reject this proposal. With that, I thank everyone for coming and participating. In a great process, I will ask for a motion if anyone has, unless someone has something further to say.
Motion for what?
For moving along the resolution.
The you, Mr. Chairman, yes.
That I just read.
Also move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
I just want to say that the motion is to send the new language as reading and with the recommendation of passing it.
That's the, your motion?
Yep.
Second.
And that is your second?
It is.
All right. And there is no further discussion? It shall be moved. Let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? They abstain? No abstentions? It passes. It will go on to the council now. It will be on the agenda for next Wednesday. At 6:00 PM, the meeting, the meeting starts at 6:00 PM. Hold one second.
We're standing for you.
You may, you may, I, I guess, please feel free to say something. We haven't adjourned.
Yes, for, please don't, stop, just one second.
Please, yeah.
If, if you guys are planning to come to the full council meeting, the opportunity to talk to the council about this resolution is going to be at the public speak time. So at the beginning of the meeting. There's no public hearing. There's not going to be discussion with the public, the rules, committee report. If someone is going to say something about this in favor or against it or abstaining, please do at the public speak time.
I will add one more comment. That however it goes next week, however, whoever shows up, I would expect and hope that we would maintain our civility and our willingness to hear what everyone has to say. As a democracy, I believe that's our obligation.
I agree.
I thank you for being very good tonight. The next meeting, I would expect that we would have a meeting of the following Wednesday, after the regular meeting.
The same, yeah, for the final, the thing.
That, I believe.
At 6:00, at 6:30, does that make sense?
Excuse me, we still in the meeting?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we are still, we are still in a meeting. Please wait till you're outside to.
6:30?
6:30 on, our next meeting will be 6:30 on the 10th, it is, the 10th of April. You may make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and second to adjourn. This, is there any discussion?
No.
Vote?
Aye.
Aye? This meeting is adjourned.